Alright, so I'll call the. Call to order the meeting for the Conservation Commission for City of Torrington Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four. At six-thirty P M and City Hall Room two fifteen. Uh, today. Coming in with Tom. Okay. Today, present is our guest from Trial Unlimited, Tom Cook. And who, what?
Carter.
Carter, thank you. Jeremy Spitz, Karen Spitz, uh, myself, Christine Altman, and our staff. Member Assistant City Planner Nate Marty Cyrus. Oh, it's on here. Sorry Nate.
That's okay.
Um, okay. So our first order of business is to accept the February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four regular meeting minutes. Okay, we have a motion in the second. Motion in second, all in favor. Motion carries. Next order is. New business or open space fee easement land on Sycamore Drive.
Alright, so this is a, and I'm sorry to, I mean, you're, you're gonna stay for the whole meeting anyway, right? So you're, well, we go over the stuff first, or at least some of the meeting. Let's see, I'm just gonna bring this over. Well, that's how we should do this. What do we have on there? Mike? Mike Keanab.
Alright.
Hello.
Hi Michael.
Hi, long time no see.
Glad to be here.
Hey Mike, alright, alright. So. Alright, alright, sorry guys. I don't know why.
Oh, we have.
I'm gonna start recording before I forget. Hey Mike, can you hear us?
Yes.
Uh, okay, okay. Yeah, yeah, get yourself Mike, we're getting some echo.
Sorry.
Alright, that seems to be working.
Yep.
Alright.
That's better.
Record. Oh, got us going again. Okay, cool. Um, try to share this again. No. Turn screen. Screen. Great. Alright, so this is a property right here. It's a developed lot or an undeveloped lot that we got a zoning permit for. We've approved a single-family home on this lot. This is about an open space acquisition that we're gonna get. And so what I'm looking for is if everyone is okay with this, that we would pass a motion supporting this acquisition.
Can you zoom out a little here?
Yep, I'll describe it. So this is Sycamore.
Yeah, okay.
So this is Torringford East. New Harwin, or, uh, New Hartford, and then this is Torringford. Chestnut Hill Road right here, so on this loop here.
Okay.
Um, so right here, this parcel, there was a question, it's a very complicated sort of series of incorrectly filed maps over the years. Where this was originally, this kind of block behind all these houses was city-owned open space. That was designated for a playground or a park or something like that at that time. This, all this occurred in like the eighties, seventies, eighties, when it was like zoning was in place and subdivision regulations were in place. But it was being, there, there was very little staff and it was not being managed well. So essentially.
Where I live, all these developments went in and there's like no parks.
Right, and that was the initial idea. The, the approved subdivision map shows all of this as being city-owned open space. Meanwhile. The developer, after that was approved, went in and essentially. Joint split it and then joined it to all these parcels so that it looks like it looks today. And they just did that and filed the map and updated, and updated all the, uh.
Sneaky.
The deeds and it was, and, but there was no approved map and it was after subdivision regulation. So technically, the map that stands shows this as city open space. But since then, there's been all these like illegal combinations. So technically, there's kind of, it's not even an easement, right? It's like open space that's undefined. And so it's very difficult for us, if we really wanted to enforce this, we would have to, uh, hey George. We'd have to go in here and like. And, and kind of, you know. Tell all these people that they don't own the property behind them and, and do this big argument and, you know. Basically take all the land back, which is not something that I think we're really prioritizing as far as the department. But because this lot hasn't been developed yet and they had to get a zoning permit for it and their surveyor came and, and showed it all. It gives us an opportunity to, uh, to kind of correct this. And part of that is by, you know, requiring that that be set aside as open space kind of after the fact. And this is just a pic, uh, an image.
Is it like one eighth of what it would have been?
Well, what of the entire, oh yeah, exactly. It's a tiny piece, so this is what it looks like here. So they're saying, hey, we don't even own this back here. It, cause the deeds are just so confused on this issue.
What do we have to gain to take that little piece?
So we don't, we don't have to, it would just be a more accurate reflection of what's actually, you know, of the approved subdivision map. So this is, so this is Jeremy Leifer, the planner, he wants to like, you know.
Okay, I can see if we were, if the city was going to work to acquire all of it, but is there anything to be gained by just taking this little?
A little slab?
Yeah, it's probably, well, what does it come out to be? Uh, I had done that calculation.
It's not a little slab, it was a.
A blue area.
Twenty-one thousand square feet. So that comes out to, what, like?
Half an acre.
Yeah, half an acre, so, so it's not, in our terms, it's not completely insignificant, but it. It's landlocked. In addition to this, a part of this is that, um, Jeremy's asking that this piece here, that's also a part of this. Cause there was some questions as to where this line was here and the surveyor found that this was part of this, even though it's included in what he found in the most recent deed. That this be an easement granted to the Conservation Commission and this be fee land, just to, so it would kind of protect a larger sort of piece of this back here. Like you said, it's completely landlocked. I mean, we could negotiate and access, I think, over the property via the easement without actually like drawing it. We can say, you know, during reasonable hours with advanced notification, we could, you know, access via like the north side or something like that to get to the back of the parcel and. And monitor it.
That's the parcel over there where your arrow is.
Yeah, this is the one that.
And it includes that great out there, yes?
Yeah.
So this, this would be owned in fee, it's proposed to be owned in fee by the city. And this is to be proposed in, as an easement.
Meaning we would not own that, it would, the other property owner owns it and they would allow us.
But it would be conservation restrictions on it, so they couldn't like clear vegetation, but they would still own it. Whereas this would be just a city-owned open space property.
So it sounds like Jeremy wants us to acquire it, what, does he have a city planner like a idea for it, or it's just?
Well, so he's already worked it out with, the, the developer is okay with this, because they don't want to hold it either.
Cause like the tax.
They, yeah, they don't want to hold this piece either, because they've already surveyed it, they, they put the house fits in here fine and setbacks, there's no issue there, there's no other reason for them to have it.
Why wouldn't they attach it to that property?
This, this one here?
Well, the whole thing, like the whole, like.
Why wouldn't they?
Yeah, why don't they just make it like the rest of the neighborhood? Is it just to try and remedy the fact that there should have been open space?
I think that that's Jeremy's position on it, but in their position is that they don't want to hold it, so it's like, you know.
And is there some maybe future point where they would go and acquire the rest? They're not acquiring, but like. I had a read.
Yeah, I mean, it's possible that we could, but it would be a very kind of adversarial thing to just, without any kind of leverage, right? Like this is, they're developing the lot and all this stuff is in flux as they're trying to like, you know, it's going from a vacant lot to a single family. If they, if this was like a commercial district or something, then there would be like substantial commercial improvement. Where, then, then they could like, you know, as a part of a site plan, maybe do that, but because it's all residential and they're already built out. I think the chances of them actually acquiring the rest of them are pretty low.
So.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, so that, that corner right there is where there's gonna be a future house then?
This right here.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
They've already dug out the foundation for it.
A developer building, or is that a actual person?
Yeah, it's, it's a developer that's working with, uh, like the owner owns the property, I think it transferred and then they're working for the owner to build.
Does the owner think he owns the whole thing?
No, the owner thinks that he doesn't. That's been the, they've wanted to say, no, 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 we don't own any of this. And then we're saying, well, you kind of do, but we need to remedy this so that it's not ambiguous.
He doesn't want to own it because of tax reasons?
I, I'm, that's my assumption, they don't, they don't need it, it's, they, they can fit the house in fine, there's no real. I mean, they could develop back in it, yeah, there's some wetlands back there, so that would make it difficult for them to clear and do things back there. If they wanted to like extend the lawn or something like that, so even that is difficult.
Is it wooded?
It's wooded, it's kind of low quality and basives. Maybe there, I think you're looking at an ashover story that's dying and multi-floor rows and it's all open and kind of, you know.
Okay, so then does that become a liability for us in terms of those trees falling down on people's properties and?
It's so far from any infrastructure, I mean, there is this encroachment here. They want, I think they want to address this. I mean, this is really just the edge of a concrete pad here, but I think they want to bump it out so at least the pool area isn't, but maybe part of the fence is still an encroachment.
That's my cousin. It was like, wait, pool, I know who's got the pool. And Chestnut Hill Road?
Yeah, you can see there's all kinds of encroachments, like there's like a shed on this, I mean, this has been like the last undeveloped lot for a long time.
Okay, so I have a question, when, say, other, um, this doesn't really have to do with that lot in particular, it just has to do with the whole situation. Will this come up potentially again if there is a property owner in that strip who is looking for a permit for something else?
Um, I don't think so, because I don't think it's a substantial enough improvement to be like conveying property, it would be a zoning permit. So if, if it was, if it was something that had to go to.
Doesn't show up in sales when they're, when, like a deed transfer?
Well, the way that, right, like a title search?
Yeah, I was surprised.
Yeah.
It hasn't come up.
I know, I think it was so long ago that it's just. I don't know.
Buy their title, title insurance and.
I, yeah, yeah, and if the problem comes up, then they, you, I don't, I don't really know, none of this has ever come up before. So it's, so, so basically, you know, this is something that Jeremy Leifer, the city planner, he wants to do it this way. He's kind of requesting that the Conservation District support it, because he's gonna bring it to council, because it has to be a property acquisition formally. Uh, I acknowledge that it's a low priority, kind of like low conservation value property in the scheme of things, but there's not too much like.
There's not a big downside.
There's not a huge cost from like absorbing, from absorbing it into the open space portfolio. It just means if it does end up that way, if someone encroaches into it, it's just more of a wooded area. It's very fragmented, it's not adjacent to any other pieces, right, it's surrounded by the subdivision. So I don't know, I personally, I, I don't, you know, I feel supportive of it, but not excitedly supported.
There's really no cost though, are you, you don't pay taxes on everything?
Right, the city wouldn't pay taxes, they would lose tax revenue, but a very marginal, like, you know, excess land for half an acre. I, landlocked is probably pretty negligible as far as lost.
We have had to pay for trees that have fallen from open space onto, you know, residential property. Let's see, that's, that's the only thing I see.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm struggling with that, I feel like we're doing a favor to the property owner, kind of, like. I, I would, I would agree. And is that okay with everybody? I don't, I mean, I'm just saying, I, I'm.
Well, part of it is the, it's, it's kind of unclear whether or not the property owner owns, owns it, like the, so their surveyor, you can see where these corner pins are. Like there, the surveyor says, this is what they own, this is not what they own, they don't own this.
Well, he thinks he owns the shaded area though.
He don't, yeah, and that, I think this.
Thinks they own the whole thing, but this person thinks they don't.
I think because maybe they weren't. They were done, this whole subdivision was done long enough ago that the same developer was doing the entire. Things, they probably just were like, whatever, it's a detail that they don't want to have to.
Have to do it on.
Right.
You didn't have to be sneaky with this one, because it didn't.
This was a leftover lot from years and years, like this subdivision probably went in in the eighties. And this was the only leftover lot and it's hung around for, you know, thirty years after that.
Do developers sell it for more money? Would he not want to take it?
I think it's.
It's like it's a builder more than a developer, if someone owns it and they're having someone build.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, so if they have access to this land, they are buffered by that land, but they don't pay taxes on the land, why would they, why would they say, oh yeah, we want it?
Yeah, right, well, it's perfect.
It's landlocked, now, it's nobody can, nobody can use it. That's, we can't use it.
Well, and then in, yeah, well, it just basically leaves it as an ambiguity, because it's, there it is and like, you know. The loop is not closed, so that we don't know who owns it, no one owns that property.
I think Jeremy should get an easement going, to Sycamore Drive.
Well, this is all this, this is all, right, well.
Do you know what I mean?
Well, but we could phrase, I mean, the, the drafting of the easement itself could include access. I mean, it could be restricted to the Conservation Commission for purposes of monitoring. I mean, what kind of, you cannot go do anything recreational on this anyway, like, you know, pickleball courts in the back there, I don't think that's gonna happen, but like, you know, right. As an entire block, it was supposed to be like this recreational amenity.
We can airdrop stuff in.
Research, research on squatters, thought it is.
Keeping it, keeping it just untouched space and using that kind of the conservation that we are, if, yeah, it's small.
Yeah.
If nobody, if, if we don't do anything with it, the only liability would be if a tree fell on somebody's property, we have to go cut it up, but like.
Or send, send Public Works to do it, right, that's essentially what we would do.
I don't know, it was pulled out of our power, our power account.
Well, since we have no account.
We have no account, so it's not an issue. So I guess, okay, good, there we go, no risk cost.
No structure, but I'm very close to that, except that pool.
Yeah. But it does, yeah, right, what it's protecting is the fact that if they went in and extended their lawn into this area. When we do our open face review, saying, no, it has to be in a forest, it can, you know, you have to restore it. So, you know, I mean, I could easily see it, it's all flat. You know, there's nothing to say they couldn't just start clearing and clear the whole thing out and. Or a bigger yard, just a big yard.
The environment, this way it's protected.
At least it's protecting like the, uh, you know, impervious, it's, it's got a better, uh, you know.
Yeah, for some of the flooding costs in the east end.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Not that this is in the east end, but.
You don't consider it any sense?
The far east end, right, it, it is technically east, but anyway, yeah, so, I, I don't know. So, yeah, that's how I fall on this, is in my personal opinion, is that it's not a terribly exciting acquisition, but there's not a lot of risk and it's, you know. It's a natural area that'll be a natural area.
With the squirrels up there.
Exactly, there'll be a refuge for the squirrels. There's not a lot of, there's a lot, there, there's, maybe there's actually a few, there's a few little fragments through these, through the subdivisions that are like open space. I thought we did it, uh, something over here. Yeah, that's, yeah, that would be over here, and then there's one in here.
Did we do?
This is that river, it goes along the.
Yeah, I don't remember doing the one to the right that you were just hovering over.
Wait, over here somewhere?
Yeah.
This one. Yeah, this, this is on Oxbow.
Oh yeah, I do remember Oxbow. Never mind.
So there's like these little fragments that exist, but not, not quite this little.
Yeah.
But who knows, maybe, yeah, maybe down the road, this would be rectified, again, even if it was all brought into the fold, you're talking.
You were saying it's wetland.
Few acres, there's some. No, there's some area that looks wet that I'd say, maybe if you had someone with a soil logger out there, they would classify it as wetlands, but it might only be two hundred square feet. Yep, right, right around here. In this. But it's not a, you know, it's like a puddle.
Yeah, okay. Well, I don't mind conserving a neighborhood puddle.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, amphibians or whatever, they could use them, they could use some help.
Alright, well, if everyone, if people are in agreement about this, I would just, you know, request a, a motion to recommend. The acquisition of fee and adjacent conservation easement land on Sycamore Drive.
Motion exactly what you said.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Old business, H B A event planning.
Um, one, I, I'd like to bring up one more, uh, project that, to be added to the agenda, if you're okay with it, this just came in. So you'd have to take a, technically a vote, yeah, uh, regarding five zero five University Drive Conservation Easement.
As old business or new business?
Uh, it's new business, yeah.
Okay, so can we have a vote, a motion to add five oh five University Drive to the agenda? Okay, Karen, do we have a second?
A second.
Alright, motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Alright, so next, five oh five University Drive.
Alright, so this is a, and you might recognize this, Christine, this is a, a re-subdivision, so this is up on University Drive. Um, I don't know if you're all familiar with that area, but when you're going up the hill on the left-hand side, there's a historic barn. Do you remember that, where they conditioned the subdivision on it? So I think it's a bed and breakfast there.
Yeah.
Um, this is, um, is it Bobolinski, what's his name? Bombardieri. Uh, Bob, Robert Bombardieri, so this was the original lot, it was part of a very large subdivision, well, fifteen lot subdivision. Originally, it looked like this, he combined the lots, and now he's going back. So that, what I need from conservation on this is, there's this piece down here. And maybe you rec, remember this, Christine, I don't know if you do, or maybe George knows anything, but, cause George, are you with the land trust with heritage? Are you part of Heritage Land Trust?
No.
No, okay, I, yeah, I think our connection on that was Steve and then Dan. There's this twenty-five foot conservation restriction area along the southernmost boundary here. I can't find anywhere saying who it was conveyed to.
Oh, I don't remember, I don't know.
And I looked through the minutes and it was really, it was like, the conservation area shall be given or, well, it was very vague in the minutes. We would, if it is to the city, we would need something from the Conservation Commission, a motion saying that they don't feel that there's gonna be an impact to that easement. Kind of like what we did for, for the, um, Torrington Fair. Where it's not gonna be impacted by the subdivision. It could be to heritage, this is a heritage, like, this is Heritage Land Trust property here behind it. And they're, but they have their own access, so I just don't know. And basically, if we don't approve it now, then we have to wait, if, if it does end up being the cities, then we have to wait until the April, our April thirtieth meeting. To approve it and it'll just hang up the whole planning and zoning process. So my suggestion is, if everyone's okay with it, to do a motion to, to, um, determine that, that the subdivision does not affect. The conservation easement, and then if it does end up being owned by heritage or, you know, heritage, then it doesn't matter. But if it is, then they can, you know, they can proceed with their application. The reason I'd recommend it is because they already went through this process. This was the original subdivision that was approved with this easement, all they did was combine it. And then now they're going back to the exact same lines, so it was already approved. I don't see a reason.
If it was approved before he combined it. Then all, then it's almost as if nothing changed.
Exactly, but I just.
I think it's just that.
Be cautious, cause there's a change. Well, yes, but even if it was clear that it was the city, because it's a re-subdivision application, we would just want to be clean and say like. Nothing changed, except for the combination, and then the re-subdivision is treated like a separate.
And the regulations, did anything change in that matter of time when it went from being two lots to one lot, now going back to two lots? Has anything changed within the regulations that would? You know, come into play?
Yeah, no, it was two thousand and six, uh, was this subdivision, and we haven't had a regulation amendment to the subdivision regulations since then. We haven't had a lot of subdivision activities since, probably around this time, right, around two thousand and eight that things started slowing down. So, um, so yeah, it's really just kind of a technical procedural thing. They, I think they have to go to wetlands for this technically, which is also just really frustrating. There's the wetland flags. I don't want to do it, I don't want to bring it, but it's like, it technically is a re-subdivision with wetlands on the property. I know, I know, I really, and I had to bring it to the commission, cause it's a subdivision, I can't do it administratively. I mean, maybe I, I could do some research.
The commission.
No, of course.
Pretty quick with that one.
But you know, like two meetings through the commission, it's just like holds the whole thing up when they're literally just going from like one, two lots to one lot, back to the exact same subdivision. But anyway, it doesn't affect this commission. I was relying on Jeremy on this, cause he has so much more experience with it, and I, I don't know that he knew that it can, that it can revert it to the.
No, 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 but you can't like, I, I mean, in terms of wetlands, that it has to be two meetings.
Yes, because it has, it has to be two, you can set it up differently, you can have like, the first meeting is accepted and then they decide whether or not. Yeah, well, a lot of it, well. You're getting into like deadlines, kind of, right, so like, like the clock starts on it. So we did that one for Clog Hill where, I'm sorry, this is getting a little off topic, but, but up, we're Clog Hill where they accepted. They submitted their application, sixty-five days passed because we canceled one of our meetings. That was officially considered accepted, because it passed the threshold of thirty-five days, and that was the first meeting, so they could approve it on the second one. That's the only time I could see it, but there has to at least be that gap of time, but just wonky.
Yeah.
Procedural stuff. But anyway, so that's, so if everyone is okay with moving this forward, I would just ask for a motion, um, to consider, you know.
Determine the subdivision does not affect the conservation easement. We have a motion, does that suck?
How did it become a conserva, how did it become that?
We don't remember.
I looked through the minutes and they were really vague, there was, I think the neighbor complained, that's my guess, is that the neighbor came out in the public hearing.
Put as a barrier then, so.
There is a vegetation, vegetative barrier, right? So maybe they wanted that so that it couldn't be removed.
I think, I think that's part of, I hate, I just hate, this is my own rant, I hate how they call them conservation, cause it's really not conservation, it's just a name, it's a screen. It's a vegetative screen, but they do that just to, you know, because I think these were one of the people who came out, oh, there was a lot of opposition reading through the minutes to the subdivision.
That's what it is, they just were like, well, we'll put a conservation easement there so that those, that hedge or whatever it is can't be touched.
And so, but of course, nowhere in it did it say anything about who that was.
Which is what makes me think it's likely, yeah, makes me think it's likely that that's what it was, it was just something to appease.
Right, but maybe it was the city, maybe it was the land trust, regardless, this would kind of, if everyone's okay with it, this would cover their application to, to split.
Who owns that adjacent property, where the person is?
Um, let's see. Yeah, I see, I just assumed.
It's a person, right?
David Frazier and Linda Beth Coats.
Well, how, how would he have, how would he have an effect on his neighbor's property and have an easement there?
Right, so what happens is in this, during the subdivision process, if you wanted to subdivide your land, it requires a public hearing. And, and so when it went to planning, it, it went to wetlands, and I'm sure there was public hearings through wetlands. So that people can get up and say whatever they want to say, and so they did the same thing for planning and zoning. And so the, the planning and zoning commission has to say, like, it's a way for them to be like, okay, well, this person's, you know, vocally opposed to it. They go turn to the applicant, would you be okay putting an easement here? And they say, yeah, sure, if it can get it approved, and then that's how this thing.
Did your neighbor just over grows something onto your property and declares it should be reasonable?
Well, they owned, they owned it, yeah, that, this is part of the, the parcel being subdivided, but it's just, it's a way, yeah, to appease the neighbor. Because they were vocally, well, now we're gonna see there, you know, whatever going on there, and they say, and then the developer just wants to do, or the. The owner just wants to do the subdivision and get it done, it doesn't matter that much to put an easement there or not, you know? So that's, that's kinda how these sort of things work out, I, I don't necessarily think it's the best practice. But it's a way to deal with, uh, public comment and like addressing neighborly concerns.
Well, and I'll motion exactly what Christine said.
Okay, and do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Alright, now we're on to old business, HBA event planning.
Um, yes. Yes, who's a Tonic Valley Association? And I'll just throw this up here. So this is the, the flyer that we ended up doing. Um, so I met with, uh, Julia Rogers, she came to the Conservation Commission and spoke, um, about their Follow the Forest Initiative. Where, you know, there, the whole initiative is just connecting forest fragments on a landscape level to provide. You know, connectivity across the region, um, mainly like the Appalachia sort of Highlands region going up into Vermont. Um, from New York, and this is a kinda citizen science sort of effort that they're doing. Where they're looking at where these big patches of forest cross the road, and doing kind of a formal assessment. Because most of their analysis is at the landscape GIS level, looking where those connections are. And this is an opportunity to get on the ground data on what the actual barriers are at this point, so that they could advocate for, you know, a wildlife crossing or. You know, something else. Um, so, so she met, uh, with the Conservation Commission, the commission expressed an interest in. Being trained up on this and participating, there was about ten sites or so in Torrington that were identified as these potential connections that would need assessment. And so she would provide the training, but she. Right, and she put it up, open, kinda, hey, if you wanna turn this into an event and have people come, great, we can facilitate other people being there as well. Um, so that's what this is, the flyer, I met with her onsite a couple weeks ago to sort of. Check it, check out where we might go, in Sunny Brook State Park, came up as a great, there's like so much to talk about there, so it'll be really fun if any of you would be able to. To go to this.
So that's at nine AM, right?
Yes, whatever the flyer says. Nine AM, and we did a press release, uh, haven't heard anything back on that, don't know if we will. I think it's interesting.
I'll be there on the sixth, for sure.
It's April sixth at nine.
At Sunny Brook.
At Sunny Brook.
Just at the.
At the big parking lot, yep. Yep.
At nine o'clock.
At nine o'clock, and we're not going anywhere, we're just gonna, you know, it'll be about an hour, an hour and a half, just walking around, we're gonna look underneath the bridge. Um, cause there's a, it, there's a lot of interesting stuff where, you know, what's a barrier under there, there's riprap. It could be a barrier to deer and moose and stuff, there's some substrate that have actual like, like sediment deposited. So you could see tracks, we were looking at, we saw like, I saw mink tracks, bobcat tracks, so it's gonna be really cool to see, like. There's definitely stuff passing underneath it, um, and then.
Really, you, oh, cool.
Yeah.
The bridge, you saw those tracks?
Yeah, exactly, um, and then there's, and then there's, on top of the road, we can look at guardrails. Adjacent land uses, all that kinda stuff, so she's great, she'll talk about all that, um, and then tell us how to do the assessment, counting, counting number of cars. And then looking for certain things and filling it out that way.
Lots of bear there.
Yeah, well, that's, that's not surprising.
Yeah, right, right, but.
Uh, but, but no, but really cool, we didn't see any bear tracks, people were looking for those.
Yeah, I don't ever really see bear though.
Yeah, I have, yeah, yeah, they take the garbage can and tip it over all the time.
Oh, yeah.
Garbage always, always there.
So, so yeah, my only question for everyone for that is, do we wanna provide refreshments? And it's like a whole nother event that we have to do things for.
Well, I have a question. Well, the only thing I can see providing is maybe box of gel. But I don't know if that's necessary.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have to, we didn't, we didn't offer refreshment, so my only thought were all these gift cards.
Oh, you have a bunch of gift cards?
From the last time when we did the gift card, so I think it was the last Earth Day, right, cause you did Cafe Soul at the.
Earth Day at Cafe Soul was the, the World Day.
Right, the World Day, so we went, we went to all these big box places and like got all these cards, so now this has like. Three dollars on it. So I don't know, we're maybe, maybe this isn't even worth getting a bag of chips or something, right, it's breakfast, so I guess I'll just hold on to these and we'll just, cause. These places, you just go and you're like, hey, Stop and Shop, and I get a twenty-five dollar gift card for our event, and they're like, sure, okay. And then you go to the other Stop and Shop and you say, can I have a gift card, and, and you know, but it's a lot of work.
We have to, yeah, the best thing though is to just, is to go in with the letterhead, the city.
And that's what we, that's what we have usually, so, well, if, if folks are okay not providing refreshments, since we have the other event going on where we have to actually provide.
We're expecting people from the, um.
Yeah, that's true.
High School Club, the Environmental Club.
I shared it with them.
Okay.
I shared it with their staff person, their teacher. And so hopefully, I mean, that'd be cool, that's like the whole, we brought it up to them. So.
Alright, so we'll see if they show up, they don't really even have a count on who's gonna.
Right, the only person I circulated it to them, and then all the people I circulated the press release to for. For Earth Day, which included, obviously, all the news places, but also Torrington Trails Network, they're already, I already know they're gonna have a couple people that are gonna be there. And then I think, I don't know, uh, maybe, maybe we'll get another one or two people from that list there, so.
I don't think we need to provide, provide, uh, refreshments for that, I don't know if anybody else has any opinions on it, but.
Just more work.
Yeah, and then it's like a distraction from.
Yeah, what we're gonna do, while you're tracking down.
Well, that's always the, that's always the, the crux of the Earth Day, yeah, the, the Earth Day cleanup, it's the same thing, except we have a giant. Rollaway dumpster, but, but it's like, yeah, how much trash, we don't quite have enough, uh, staff to do a zero ways, that'd be cool. To, if we had, like, do like a future Earth Day cleanup with like a zero ways type thing. But I, I, you know, I'd like to do it. It's hard enough to get it all together without that, but, um, maybe we can look at that for a future year. So anyway, that was, so that's all, that was my only thought with that, other than that, it's gonna be the sixth, so.
Okay, our Earth Day event planning.
Um, so that, we, uh, we have quite a bit more done.
I haven't gone to Soul yet, but I plan to go tomorrow during the day, it's quiet.
Let me just update, cause I have a list, yeah, that's good, so you said you're gonna go to Soul. Trout Unlimited said that they, um, that they might be able to provide some help on, on that for Cafe Soul. But.
Do you have any idea what the cost will be?
So, last year I went in and I just said, what can you do for a hundred and fifty dollars, this is what I want, I want this chicken, I want this rice, and I want a salad. And I thought it was like incredibly generous what they, you know, they gave us a good tray, so I'm going to do the same. Um, and if it's substantially less, prices have definitely gone up, then, you know, I'll just say okay. You know, and, and, uh, and figure it out.
Well, we can split that.
Okay, awesome.
You want cash upfront?
I've been paying cash, but I don't need cash. I can't even take a credit card, but I'd rather not.
But I will, I'm, so I have, uh, shared the flyer for this event, Trout Unlimited. We, I think one other event came up that day, but I, I shared this one first, so hopefully there will be some participation from our membership. We actu- actually regarding the other April sixth thing, we have another cleanup on the Nogatuck that day. Uh, with the, with another Trout Unlimited chapter, so there probably wouldn't be any, any of our people coming to the, to the.
To Earth Day.
To the April sixth.
Oh, 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 oh.
The land trust. Although it sounds.
That was pretty fun, right?
Is the, the, the Trout Unlimited cleanup's gonna be in the Litchfield section of the Nogatuck, is that what?
The one on the sixth is, yeah, they're meeting at exit forty-two, forty-four, exit forty-two. At the parking lot.
Okay, the lower parking lots, they can get down in there, okay, cool.
So, yeah, so that's obviously coming right up too, and then, uh, I hope to have some pretty good participation. At your cleanup.
Okay.
Would you want a table? Do you have any, or provide any kind of, you don't have to be there, but like, there, do you have flyers or educational stuff?
We have a banner.
I would totally put that.
Yeah.
Have your banner, see if you can, uh. Honor of membership.
Yeah, you might be able to get some folks to join up. We just, I mean, I don't know if you know where we set up for this usually, but it's at the Civic Center, I think, or on the steps leading up into the Civic Center.
So they pull up, they have like the banquet tables inside, they pull out a few of the banquet tables and some chairs, we set up tables, you can only add another. Or, um, yeah, I mean, I don't know if you, you probably wouldn't need the tent, but you could hang up your banner.
Right, cause we have the overhang there, that, it's really nice.
Yeah.
Great, and so I just wanna make sure I, the only, oh, a couple others, just everything else I have, date and time. With the locations reserved, and we're all set with that, flyer and press release, all that's out, I circ- dumpsters coming. Um, fifteen yard, I think that's plenty. I did a outreach to Save the Sound, Torrington Trails, the karate schools, I sent them all stuff. The scu- the, the high school. So everyone has it, um, so who's the woman at Torrington Trails that came to our meeting last year? I know, I don't remember, but she's on Torrington Trails, so she was, she was affiliated with the schools, and she helped us last year get the word out to the schools. Um, I know I should know her name, cause she talks to us all the time, um, but anyway, so she'll, she'll get that, and she can continue to follow up with that. Um, we have all our supplies set, the only thing we don't have is bags.
We don't have bags?
We have some bags, we have like. Like fifty bags.
Okay.
So.
So we used to, I don't, okay, so we used to get bags. From Torrington Supply, are they still with them?
Torco, it is now.
And, and who owns it?
It's Torrington Supply and they changed their name from, you're talking about the flying supply place? Yeah, Torrington.
It's not Main Street, it's kinda, there's like some storage area there, it's, I thought it was Torrington Supply.
How about the, uh, was it Blue Seal that the?
I mean, did, we used to get it completely donated from Torrington Supply, maybe we can get them donated from, were we getting them donated from Lowe's?
That's what, I, that's what we had done, and I had got it from Lowe's and Home Depot gave a hundred dollars.
Okay.
We did that, so.
Oh, okay, they each gave a hundred dollars and we used it to buy gas?
And other stuff, that was a couple of years ago now, we basically, yeah, it lasted.
Okay, okay.
Um, so.
So we need people to go and, with a letterhead and request?
That would be nice.
Okay, anybody volunteer?
Can work with me, I can get them, you know, the letter if they wanna follow up and pick it up.
No, no, no.
Wow, this is amazing.
No, no.
It's really not that hard.
No, it's not. Another, another thing to consider though, is what we did in Winchester for our fall cleanup was, got used. Grain bags, um, I think, like, maybe that Bad Dog Brewery would have grain bags. And then the, the farm supply places have feedbags. And they are. They're probably. Thirty, like, you know, thirty gallon bag.
Okay, um, what, what, in terms of like the bulkiness of them, are they bulky?
They're a little bit bulky, but they're, but they're also reinforced.
Okay.
So they don't tear out as much.
There's a tying, because we also, so what happens is they go out there, clean up, and then leave them on the side of the road, so we just wanna make sure that. That folks could have an easy enough way to seal them, cause I've used our, I've used, um, for garbage, we use our pellet stove. Pellet bags for that, but then like, they don't like tie easily, so.
One of these little handheld things that melts it, have you seen that?
Oh, that's a great idea, like a, like an iron, like a hair iron.
That's interesting.
Yeah, so that, that's my only concern with doing those types of bags, we're just making sure that they don't. If, if the trash gets prices, then we're gonna get balls and.
It's not Earth Day, so it's eight to twenty.
Uh, another, another fifty bags would probably be fine. Like a contractor bag.
Yeah, so you want a heavy duty, I mean, you know, you don't want them to be too huge because they get wasted. Uh, and, you know, kids are filling them, and they have to drag them around with them.
So like a thirty gallon or?
Fifty, thirty gallon contractor bags.
Cause I mean, as many, and, and if it's like.
Heavy duty black plastic?
Yeah, as many as possible, we're always gonna use them, cause we do these events.
They have, you know, they expect to donate to, um, volunteer organizations. So if you go and say you're with the Conservation Commission, you go talk to the manager, the Conservation Commission for the city of Torrington, here's the city of Torrington, Letterhead. And, um, we are looking for donations for our Earth Day cleanup, we often clean up. Behind your parking lots or, you know.
Yeah, we've got, I mean, Home Depot's not even in Torrington, but they're, you know, they're part of the East Main Street family.
There you go. So they.
Forty, yeah, I mean, here.
What's it gonna be?
Home Depot, there's a forty-two gallon, is that too big?
So, a kitchen is twelve, no, I don't think a forty-two gallon is too big, is that what they have? You know, do they have a lot of? I mean, sometimes you have big things too, right? The big ones are rough, I mean, if you have to.
But you mean like the big bulky stuff?
Oh, the big stuff people just pull, put in a pile.
Right.
It has shopping carts.
But what they'll do is, when, so I've done this before, you go in there, give them the letterhead, they'll say, okay, you may wanna call in advance so that, you know, that. And then they'll, it, they'll just give you a gift card, and then you just go on a shopping spree, and.
Right, and you buy, uh, so we have gloves, we're, we're good with gloves?
We're good with gloves, we get those from Doyle's, we have like an amazing amount of gloves.
Okay.
So we're good, but, eh, all we need is the, is the garbage bags.
Well, I'm a volunteer to go to Lowe's, but you're, you're gonna send me a.
A letterhead?
A letterhead.
Yeah.
And then, so when I get the card, you want me to buy the things that we need?
That would be helpful, yeah, if you just bring them to the event.
Okay, the same thing like we do every year.
Yeah, okay, I'll just do it in the email, I'll do an email with.
Got it, yeah.
Thirty bucks for a fifty, for a fifty-five. For how many, fifty gallons? For fifty bags of the forty-two, yeah, so, I mean, it ends up being, yeah, they give us fifty dollars or whatever, it's not. We do have water, we do have water, we never go through that much water.
That's, it's true, and, and what about Duncan Dolements?
Duncan Dolements is all set up already, yeah, we're, Ashley does that.
Oh, Ashley's gonna.
Ashley always does that, yeah. Yep.
So we usually, we get there at eight-thirty, um, participants arrive, and I usually try to get there at eight.
Okay.
And roll bags like a crazy person, and then try to organize the, um.
The maps.
The maps, like a crazy person.
Do you do any in-stream cleanup in this?
Used to do them all the time with Trout Unlimited, we used to have, um, special days set aside. That were different than Earth Day. Um, and we would clean different sections of the rivers of, I mean, it, it was really kinda amazing because. We were doing it year after year, and you couldn't get all the stuff out, like, you just couldn't get it all out, there was like. There was like fifty years of shopping carts in there.
Yep.
And then we caught up, and it's really been pretty clean since, but it does happen.
Where, where you, the places where I crossed the rivers in Torrington, they actually look pretty good.
Yeah.
Um, but I.
But yeah, we did do those, and we would love to do them again, we did it around, um, the senior center, the river along, uh, uh, you know. Perpendicular to Albert Street, so do it downtown, by the shopping plaza, that running through along the library. And, um, they, Trout Unlimited wanted to do projects to clean up, um, Bessie Pond, to make it fishable again.
Yeah.
But Army Corps of Engineers does not want to do that, for whatever reason.
What to dredge it to make it deep enough to have trout in there or something?
Yeah, so it used to be quite deep and cold, and it was like a great ice skating pond, it was a great fishing pond. Like it had quality fish in it, even though it was this tiny little thing.
Yeah.
But the east end sediment, all the silt made that, made it a big peninsula, and it filled the bottom. With quite a bit of stuff. The bottom with quite a bit of stuff and there's tons of, you know, trash from. Like the high school kids were just like taking trash barrels and tossing the whole full barrel into Bessie Pond. That's a constant thing, like I don't know, I, I'm wondering, has the dredging, it's been happening for the, they would allow us to take out vegetation.
You know, I haven't seen a lot of trash in that, I don't know if they're removing it, but you see there's spoils, like the piles that they, cause they have a permit, they got a wetlands permit to, to dredge. Not a deep dredging, but like.
But I think some, I think that dredging just needs to be happening because it seems to be better.
I don't know how much dredging it is or how much of it is just organic matter, it's just, they're not going down very deep. The city owns the pond, so there, they have a contractor, yeah, they have one of those like floating marsh master type things that they go on. Like the excavator bucket and they're just like, yeah, they pile it and de-water it.
We were, that was what we were able to do, we were trying to do. Like a, a restoration of that pond for a number of years in with Trout Unlimited, Conservation Commission, Wetlands Commission. And I mean, we could, I would not be opposed to trying that again, I don't understand why they won't let us restore it.
Yeah, so it's a great place for a lot of little kids and families just to go and put the fish in pond, what do you need, twenty feet for, for trout? Yeah, okay.
What's coming in? Perennial on the perennial water course, it's just a dammed water course. If it was like isolated, then it'd be okay, if there was like an overflow.
Do you, do you know what chapter of Trout Unlimited used to work with you?
I, I'm trying to remember the names, I was so bad, I'm trying to remember the name of the guy and then that will tell you the chapter. Nope, no, he, um. Wait, uh, I don't even, I, I, I don't know if he passed away or not, but his health started to fail, he had to, um. Sergeant have to use a cane, big tall guy, white beard, white hair.
Do you know where he lived? Okay, cause, cause our. Our district includes Torrington, but just south of Torrington, it's a different chapter. So we're chapter oh nine, they're the, uh.
Does it say what chapter? On, on the, that flyer that we did with Trout Unlimited, does it say what chapter of Trout Unlimited on that flyer?
That was to Trout Unlimited, that was a partnership with Trout Unlimited, I don't, I don't know, I don't think so, I think it was just, yeah, I don't remember, but I can look, I mean, that would be easy.
I, his name will come to me. It does?
Why, as bad as Trout Unlimited chapter reputations?
We had a president for a number of years who was, who alienated a lot of people. Full membership and he has left now, he's, I've left the, left the club altogether. And we are trying to restore their reputation somewhat. I mean, I, I was at conservation chair for this, for this chapter. That would suggest, you know, we get a request for a tree planting, he'd say, oh, I, those, I don't like those guys, they're, we're not gonna work with them. And so he would do that about everybody.
Uh, he had attitudes, huh?
So he's gone, we're trying to change that.
It doesn't say it on the flyer.
Doesn't give credit to.
Doesn't even give credit to Trout Unlimited on this, so, sorry.
Okay, Kim was the one who wanted you asking about it, I talked to Kim immediately and she was like, yeah, we did that with Trout Unlimited, they probably funded it.
So, so, oh yeah, the last piece I had for that was, so we had the food donations, supplies, um, we have to print and update the maps. Last meeting, you said it was okay if we put your phone number on the maps, are you still okay with that? Thank you, Christine. Cause right now with the number on the maps, so we give everyone the maps and then they call in to say they pick up the trash, it's defunct. So they have no way to call and tell us to pick up their trash, I put my phone number last time.
Yeah, so, um, are you able to, to, have you looked at those maps in terms of, of? Being able to edit them, the editability of them, isn't it just a bunch of PDFs?
Uh, yeah, I could probably find, well, yeah, we don't, I don't, I'm not giving a like nice version of Adobe, so I can't like. Yeah, if I give you the file for it, oh, that'd be really helpful. That'd be great, yeah, let me write this down, so. Why can't I get a good version of Adobe, I just get the reader. This is saving you all tax money, so. Yeah, you can, you feel like with the city, they would just have licenses, right?
I think you can get, yeah, I think you can get one for ten bucks a month, but I, I'm, I'm just in psych, cause I, uh, since it was a subscription, I've been, I let go of all my. Adobe products and then I have a kid who's a student who was just like, nah, please. And so because she was a student, I could get the entire Creative Cloud suite for seventeen bucks a month for a year and then I was like, oh, got another student. Next year, another student I'll do it next year.
I mean, I think we give teachers and students discounts, so that you might be able to get a, uh.
Municipal discount. We do that in other things, like we, that's how we get our GIS license for the Conservation Commission, it's through a special program, so I can look into that.
Especially if you're just asking for Adobe Acrobat.
If you can, so, so if you edit the maps, when are we getting them printed out by, cause I'd like to take them and do a. Uh, drive by and see which are the worst areas.
So I don't know, I mean, I guess if I can get it to you this week. Okay, it wouldn't be too, too long to do, I think that they're on a, they're on a, um. PDF and they're just like, they're tiled, there's like six of them on a single page and then, I don't know how many pages are, like ten.
I don't know, I don't know, I know it's a little stack, it's a little stack of cards.
Yeah, PDF with ten pages and it, and each of those pages has it subdivided into like six, four sets. Yeah, yeah.
I was gonna say it only takes like a second, but sixty times.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be really helpful, thank you, um, alright, so I'll do that and then I. I have your number already, that, the number I have, I can just pass that along, okay, cool, awesome, that's great, that's. Uh, that's all I have, the last thing I have is that the truck, Steve Ibane has volunteered to be the truck man. So it's really nice of him to, to do that, I, he likes, he likes doing the cleanup, he gets into it.
Driving his truck around and picking up the trash.
You know, yeah, that's fun. You don't have to be back at the ranch, it's, it's the brain job. Yeah, that's all I have for this, so that's great, I think once we have those together, it's the end of the month, so we're in really good shape, I don't think we have a lot of. Left to do, just really the trash bags and then getting the maps updated and all.
Something is accomplished, we just check back in with you. And confirm, okay.
Are, are we putting, are we gonna put fruit trees in that park, um, that?
That, yep, we, we, there's a new development there, so, okay.
Alright, so the next order of business is our local cons- conservation group roundtable planning.
I said defer because that's a Dan, that was a Dan project.
Deferred. Table that, alright, and then we have the staff update.
So Torrington Waste Management Update, so we had that, that last meeting talking about.
Yes, thank you for coming.
Nice to meet you. The Torrington Waste Management Update, uh, so after that last meeting where we got the presentation. I offered to follow up with our recycling coordinator, basically we played phone tag, I didn't get to it until like a couple of weeks ago and she's been sick, so. I'm gonna meet with her next week, so we'll just table that and she said she'd just sit down, so I'm just gonna sit down with her and ask her, tell her what we learned and like some of the questions. Incidentally, I did hear that we had try, it went to council approval for doing pay as you throw and it was, it was shot down.
And that was a long time, that was years ago.
But it was, but, but you know, there was a lot of opposition, so.
Well, I, I, I was at the meeting last night for the Historical Society. And I, I talked to Eleanor about it, cause it's not really, I, I'm involved with that recycling, but it's not considered a commission or anything, it's just, uh. Five of us to get together, um, I, I think.
Tom is on that, right?
Tom is on it, yeah, and so I talked to her and I said, you know. I forget the girl who heads it up, what, what is her name? I said Linda's told me that she's so booked up with stuff that she has to do for other people. And at Department of Public Works that she don't have time to devote to this, so I, I talked to Eleanor and I said, Eleanor, you know what? She, we were into it, so why, why don't we continue, because I, I looked into. Woodbury and Southbury, they're all doing the program and it, and it's doing very well, Noggettuck I think is in an act.
Was in our area, but I can't remember, was it Winchester, where was it? Worked for some, some other communities and it sounded very positive, yeah.
So, yeah, so I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll get it from her, I mean, obviously you're a part of that commission, the committee too, but, um. I know, so Linda, the backstory with Linda, so she was the, um, administrative assistant in public works or for engineering, I think specifically. And then she took on this new position, but because she has all the institutional knowledge and like, you know. She's the go-to, everyone's like, I wanna talk to Linda, and then she's still that person kind of. So I think she's stretched probably a little bit more than they intended for the position when they created. She's just the recycling coordinator, that's her god.
I'd be interested in, um, joining that.
Yeah, we do, and it's, it's not considered by the, by the city as a, a committee or anything, it's just a group of people that get together, yeah, yeah. And it's pretty, it's really interesting and, and, um. Yeah, uh, I, they wanted, I sit on the Sierra Club Political Committee and they wanted to do an article about. That and they, I was hoping that Torrington would say they wanna start following what Woodbury's doing, Woodbury's program is working really well and so is Southbury's. But, you know, Linda said she's just way too busy to, to do anything, so.
No, I think that's a transfer station model for Woodbury.
And Eleanor admitted it last night, it's, 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 we're in dire straits with places to, you know, to. To put our waste and they're not gonna build another waste energy plant because that really is, is, waste of energy is a pollution project and. And where we've been putting them, where we put it the last one where it was, was right next to a, a really. Under, you know, people, uh, probably written areas, so, and that's, and so we dump all the pollution there, so. So that was the, the article I was trying to put together for, anyway. It was in the newspaper and I was gonna follow through with the Woodbury, but, but they've been doing it for a while.
Well, that's the person, that, that person presented was, she was part of that pilot project, right?
So during the free period, you wouldn't have any issues if people dumped the trash in the woods or.
I think during the free period, what you have issues with is people putting the wrong stuff. In, like that's the, they're doing a bunch of education during that free period, like I don't think it's completely smooth, there's a huge.
No, it is, it definitely isn't, isn't smooth, but they, but they, they do have it in the works, so they are working on it, so I mean. It would be a good thing if we did that too here.
Every time I looked at my parents' recycling bin, there were like steel lawn chairs, there was like all kinds.
So many people, I, I, you know, where I work, everyone is like.
And I understood it, they were like, this should be recycled.
I'm always seeing things in the, and I put up these big signs, no napkins, no with plastic utensils, this, that and the other, and people are so, no coffee cups are still thrown in there.
Yeah, it's, and you see that in every place where they have a recycling program, when you look down into the bin. It's got all the stuff that shouldn't be in there, I think that's kind of the biggest problem.
It is, and I, so I think it's an edu- education component that's not happening.
Well, good, I, I'll, I'll let you know.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I talked to Linda and she's gonna say, try to make some time, and I know Eleanor was really hot to trot, so.
Yeah, I'll talk to Linda, maybe we can, I mean, you, you know better than me what's going on with that whole thing, so maybe we can, you know, talk about that and see what she. Cause I am interested to see where she's like, she may just say, she may just say where, like what you're saying, where she's just like, I'm overbooked, I have no. Cause I know she has a lot with just the bulk pickup train, like that, the, the program for the change in the bulk pickup was like. All that stuff and all the toters and like, you know, getting people toters and like, it just, just the administration of. The bare minimum is a lot, um, for just, for just her, I know she works with our Blight Committee.
Yeah, she does.
To like clean up blighted proper, to make sure that they're like, you know, the city can facilitate that, but.
You know, the garbage trucks have a waste sensor when they pick up the trash?
I don't think they do either.
I mean, if you look at that robotic arm.
I mean, Steve, Steve, and Steve Ibane brought that up too, the idea of weighted trash, you know, like doing it by bulk, by volume, I mean, you know.
Cause I, 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 I know some people in Woodbury and they said that a lot of people don't like the program and they know people that are throwing the trash or burning the trash. So.
To avoid it?
Yeah, to avoid it.
Avoid buying a plastic bag?
Well, yeah, I mean, some people, you know, a bag, then certain bags, maybe you, one person didn't like the color, which I think is stupid.
Oh my god, really?
So I, I would hate to see people throwing, you know, the bags in the woods.
What's sad is people are paying now in your taxes, but you're just not seeing it, you know what I mean, it's so hard for people to make that, that change like.
I don't think anybody in Torrington thinks, I mean, every person in Torrington is always harping on how much they're paying in taxes and what they, I mean, I think they know what they get for it. Maybe not, maybe they don't, but.
But it's gonna get worse.
They're very aware that the trash is, is coming out, you know, as part of the tax bill.
Right, but it, so if you go to this pay as you throw system, you may. In theory, actually save money if you reduce your waste, but people aren't getting that.
Thought we would, I thought, we thought people would be happy to save money when they were, we had like a initiative to take out. Excess, no, it's had nothing to do with trash, was the excess, every time, every time, uh, the power, a pole goes up. They put a light on it and then they charge us to lease that light. So there were tons of unnecessary lights, they create traffic issues, they create glare at night, so there was, so there was a. Initiative to take them down, save on the lease, lease money that we had to pay. People came out and like, you're gonna take away our lights and you're not gonna, we know that you're not gonna lower our taxes, our taxes go up all the time. You know, it was, it was the, the attitude that the taxes are high and then the. All the, yeah, I mean, the pigheadedness in terms of, um, not wanting any change.
Well, you're a harvest that right.
I'm sure it's going on everywhere with these kind of programs, I would think so, I mean, it seems like in Woodbury, there's. It is interesting to see like, right, like the newspaper, right, there's a lot of positivity and it is a good thing to move in that direction, but it's like, uh. You know, I remember this is a, just a tangential thing, but like when I was at Yukon, they went to save food waste, they went to. They had trays and Yukon is like an unlimited plan, so you just get as much as you want and they were like, well, why give kids trays? Cause what they're doing is just piling full of food and then throwing it all away. And so they, they, in the dining hall, they're like, okay, we're gonna get rid of trays, just have to get up, get a new plate, go out there, completely reasonable. And the kids like, we're gonna have a revolt and they're like, we're gonna protest and they left all their dishes and I was working in the dining hall at the time, so like. So all of like the, the, the food service workers are like, like, you know, and they're like leaving all their trash because they. Don't wanna get up and get another, it's still free, it's just that, or not free, but you know, part of their tuition, but they had to get up and get another thing and they couldn't just pile. But it was, but it was well, not well, they got pissed off, uh, we got pissed off, but like, but eventually. Adoption happened and then, you know, the next, the, with, with, that's the difference. With a college, you have turnover, so by the time four years happens, no one, no one even knows anything. And so, but that doesn't quite happen in a, in a city.
I mean, just, I work a lot with the transportation and, you know, people are so afraid of roundabouts and roundabouts are so. Fantastics for so many reasons, but people are like, oh, I don't wanna rotary, they're bad and I don't know what to do and, you know.
Man, it moves traffic really well.
Really, they really are green.
Woodbury also has a transfer station that they have to bring trash to, where they can count individual bags. For us, I don't know how the logistics would work, how would you know if you threw one bag in your trash bin or two?
Well, they would just pay upfront, so they would just have to see if it's the right color. Oh, right now, you mean?
Now the guy goes around with his arm. Sticks the arm out and dumps it, how would, how does he know if there's one or two bags, good point.
Well, right, right now he doesn't care, but they would pay upfront.
You're paying for it, that you buy the bag, so it doesn't matter if somebody throws their trash in your bin, if it's the right colored bag. You're paying for them as you buy the bag. So it doesn't matter if somebody throws their trash in your bin, if it's the right colored bag. They're buying the bag.
Or buy or buy an orange colored bag off Amazon, it doesn't have.
Right, well, that would just be an enforcement that I don't think that they're, realistically, they're not gonna, they're probably not gonna do a high level enforcement. Maybe they would, when it. Got rolled out, they would do like law enforcement, just to to get the word out.
I remember when recycling started in Torrington, there was a woman who was hired to basically go and shake. You go into the garbage and shake a bag and make sure it doesn't sound like jingle, like there was metal and and glass in there. Yeah.
So it's a part, I mean, it is a pilot program, but the newspaper really, really said it was.
Press, there's always gonna be people who, I mean, remember too, I love, I love when the um. Videos come up of people's reactions to having to wear seatbelts, like when that was becoming.
Yeah, right, right, right.
And it was, it was really the exact, it was exactly the same thing.
There's smoke on your campfire, smoke used to be able to smoke in the hospital.
What's what's this country coming to? People thought that was gonna be the end, you know, everybody's.
It takes time for for things to, yeah, yeah.
All right, let's move on.
Okay.
Flooding pamphlet mailing project.
Thank you all for stuffing.
That was great.
That was helpful for me. Um I know it seems small. It's just like these things end up like. Um, so that was great. They all got out, zero response. So. One person called about a wetland issue on another property. I expected some people to complain about their neighbors to me. Like, like to be like, they're not doing it, cause that's usually what I get in our office, but it.
I thought you wrote the letter so well. It was just so.
It's so self explanatory.
Yeah, it was just, no, but I mean, not even that, it was um, I just thought it was really pro-social. Like, it wasn't blaming anybody. It was just like, we've got a problem. We've got to handle the problem. You have a problem too. Here's what you could do.
Yeah.
I mean, I thought it was.
And we'll see, and we'll see if we get any calls or anything like that. I know one person I know who had a really bad site there, she contacted me about a wetland permanent on another site. Maybe it reminded her to call me, but um.
I watched, no response at all.
No, no response, but we'll see. I'll I'll keep you updated if I get anything interesting. I think the commission may be interested here if we like, you know, if this affects anything.
Northwest Connecticut Land Conservancy.
That's just an update. You all um authorized me to send a letter of support for doing a Trails Master Plan for the. Northwest Connecticut Land Conservancy. They just, I'm assuming that they got the grant to conserve. The town farm property on Town Farm Road in Litchfield, that's where the solar development is going. Um, which by the way is crazy if you've driven by there. Have you swung by and taken a look? It's. There's a lot of environmental monitoring of the site, but it's a, it's just, it was a really pretty place and it's. And even the silt fences are bright orange, so it's like, you just see like.
Myself, it's helping with the.
Right. Yeah, it's it's happening regardless. So there it is. Uh it's it's going on and and the city's holding them to tracking and. Right away issues and all that, so um, you know.
I was on that, I I was. Thought there was gonna be a lot of erosion problems there.
There, so they, you know, they got their plan approved by DEEP. Um I went out on site, they have two environmental monitors separate, on independent, the Conservation District is has an MOU with the state to do certain size projects. All of them. And then they had to hire, they have their own, you know, had to hire their own consultant. So they were out there together and I went with them and they were like. Really strict about their their enforcement. Um like, you know, hey, this filter sock in this area that's not really even a danger isn't in. Like, get it in. So they were super on top of it. Well, that's, yeah, we'll see what happens with that.
Food forest planning.
Yeah, so that was, so for this project. Yeah, I I I'm not gonna introduce the project. We all know it, right? Just planting trees in urban areas for fruit orchards. Um. Uh Northwest Conservation District, we met with them, Bannon Street Park, total go. Um. Cynthia said that she wanted to do three apple trees, a handful of blueberries and other shrubs and. Maybe some low growing stuff. She hasn't developed a planting list. She wants to get out there in soil logger and look at what the soil conditions are in a couple of sites we've identified. But she said she would get us a planting list, so I'm gonna bring that to all you and we can nerd out about the planting list and see um, see what's. That's the goal. The goal is plant in the fall. So the commission should, you know, we kind of have talked about this a little bit. As far as engaging the public, I had offered to send, like to draft a letter, which is still on my.
To do.
On my to do list, um just to the community, just to be like, hey, this is going on. I mean, it's a little bit of a backwards way, right? Like to kind of be like, we're doing this, join our project, but uh, you know.
I actually think that there are some pretty involved people in that neighborhood, so.
Yes, I'll I'll do kind of Bannon Street and then Red Mountain Ave and whatever the road that runs behind there. Um. And I'll bring all that to the commission like I did with the last letter and you guys can all review it and we'll get from there.
Okay, Red Mountain Trail Grant.
That we uh, the wetlands are mapped, SLR, who's our consultant for this, seems very confident that. We are not gonna have enough money in our budget with DEEP to get this project done, even in the most basic way possible. Um, so we're just waiting to get back a plan that has kind of a menu of options.
That you can choose.
That we can choose and then.
Which might be, we leave it as.
Well.
Get the design done or the.
They just want more money for the construction and.
So I think we talked about this, the design, we had budgeted fifty thousand dollars for the design. They came in at like two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the design. So proportionally, everything is like to that degree, I think, cause we had six hundred thousand dollars for the trail and it's. It's all pretty much a grade, like it's a, it's all, there's not a whole lot of grading that needs to be done.
Well, cause usually.
Or clearing, really.
If you can get a design, then it's that much easier to get an another grant. For the construction, you know what I'm saying? Because you already have this design in place, we're ready to go. It's all been, you know.
So we had a design from BSC and it was a terrible design. Like, it was so bad that SLR could use zero of it. They had to re, they had to reshoot all the grades. Like, it was that level of like the wet, they redid all the wetlands, like, because it was just so poorly done. We didn't really get any kind of savings. For the BSC one, I don't know, but I think it did come out of Public Works. I don't think it was a grant funded thing. Um, so yeah, that was just a, that was just bad. Um, but SLR is good and we're working with them, so um. Anyway, the plan is to get this itemized list of kind of like what we can do and go to DEEP and be like, hey. Do you want, which part of us of this do you want us to do with the money we have? We're over budget, but it's like not really, you know. We spent a lot of time, I was with the the engine, the our city engineer trying to price this out and we thought. We were, we had contingency in there. It wasn't nearly enough, so.
Yeah, usually you do like a thirty percent contingency, right? Now you have to do a two hundred.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering why we would leave it.
Well, because.
They would leave it up to DEEP to make that decision.
Because we rewarded the grant based on like doing a certain amount of work for the grant, so they would have to at least approve. I don't think they're gonna be a problem. I don't think they're gonna like. Do anything punitive. I just think that they have to kind of decide for themselves what they want to fund and they may say, that's fine. Get this done through next year, come back for the Rec Trails grant next round and apply for the rest. That's how I feel like it's gonna go. They're just gonna like say reapply.
Probably a misaction that would. Make any future requests for funding, you know, work out well, and I'm not quite sure what that is, but um.
So you're, what you're saying is that DEEP might have, might not have that in mind, one man choosing?
Yeah, I mean, I um. I don't know, I I I've always just felt that if something's designed, then you're like halfway there.
Right.
And and then you just get the um, get a grant, he builds it, you know, but.
Seems kind of obvious that design is the first step, like that was.
Right, right. So what are, what are the other options?
Well, so we had, we had a, we had a preliminary design that we went in with the application. So it's like, hey, we have this preliminary design. We think this has gotten us a lot of the way there. Turns out it didn't really.
That was the BSC one?
That was the BSC one. So that kind of, so that was part of it, why we kind of under budgeted the. We thought it was gonna be just a new, an updated draft of the, yeah, it's, we didn't realize it was gonna be like pretty much starting from scratch. Um, yeah, I mean, I could, a lot, a lot was messed up, but so, so we, so. In this grant we just got it was a shovel ready project grant that we had a little bit of planning money to kind of tweak it to the final phase and then we were gonna get. Going on subcontracting, having SLR subcontract out guys to do the work. Now we kind of had to allocate more of the money to planning than we had originally thought, so to to design, yeah, to design and then. And yeah, right. So the question, maybe they'll say, hey, okay, that's fine. You know, use what you for clearing and maybe initial grading or doing one of the crossings and then come back for the rest. And if you reapply.
But the plan is to finish the design.
Right, yeah. It's just that we might have to spread it out over multiple rounds of funding. That that would be my hope, that DEEP would say. Okay, that's fine. Or they'll just give us more money. I I just don't think that that's gonna happen. Yeah, behind. Yeah, it's behind Ocean State Job Lot. It's just a fragment of trail that's about half an acre, half a mile.
Um, to the New Field Road at the railroad, you know, the the railroad bridge.
Yeah.
So Route Four, right across from Torrington Company.
Right where they're tearing it down right now.
No, it's not that long, to the New Field Road, that it can connect to the Sue Rosman Greenway. There's plans connected to Sue Rosman. There's plans connected to.
Right, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's connecting, it's a, it's a connection piece, but it's, it's disconnected. It's not a complete connection.
Right, and we're making it like paved and nice rather.
Yeah, it could be like stone dust, I think.
Make it a walking trail that's not paved first, so people can use it.
Well, that might be one of the options.
It's kind of, it is a, it is a walk, you can walk the trail now.
Yeah, you can go now if you want. I mean, it's definitely, but it's very rough.
Thirty thousand dollars just for a design, that seems.
Oh, so this is a thing, is that when you get money, there's all kinds of um. Like it, it just doesn't go as far as it would go if you had that money and there's. There's all kinds of regulations and and that's just, that's just the way that it goes. Like, it's everything.
It's true, there's, there's some wetlands crossings that have to go there, so there's that regulatory component of it. There's, there's quite a bit of clearing that they would do because it's. It's it's kind of a tight little trail and there's like a huge homeless population right there, so there's like security concerns, I think, that people would have. They want to like. Make it pretty wide so that it's kind of open, you can get good sightlines and see and, you know, up and down the trail.
Yeah, that's all it is.
So here's the thing.
That's all it is.
Greenway went, went in, it was like the joint project between Torrington and Winston. Um, for, I think it was, I can't remember how many miles they were prepared to do. They get the grant, Winston really worked hard to get the grant, but in conjunction with Torrington and Torrington. Was more ready to go with the money. So I, we got two million dollars. And Kim, we thought we could do the whole thing. Kim Barberry at the time was um horrified. That you get, it was a million dollars a mile, wasn't even paid. And that was just with all of the regulatory processes. That happened.
Wow.
So it costs you a lot of money to, particularly if you're getting any money from the federal government, it costs you money.
Right.
It's a complex.
Cause they want it all. They want it, they want it done like, not like you going out with a chainsaw and cutting it, like it's just just a lot more.
So it just, so we only got, yeah, and so we only, only, the trail only just barely. Um, even got to Winston. Winston was livid.
Yeah, right, right, right.
They done all of this work to get this money, but they weren't really ready to go. We were. And then it kind of all went to Torrington, was all part of the same project, but.
That's really what happened with that piece.
Yeah, they were so mad.
Um, yeah.
You know, and and you don't, you just don't really, until, that was, I think, one of the first of those projects, we couldn't even afford to pay with that two million dollars. And then um, there was like grant money that was just sort of being thrown around by Obama and 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 that um paved it. And there was also just extra asphalt, extra asphalt.
Forgot viewer, you said something about they don't believe that they're actually gonna lower their taxes. It seems like the government is not responsible with that money. And spending two million dollars on a half a mile trail, it's just.
I mean, you could look at it that way, you could look at it as all the people they're putting to work, doing that. Everybody, there's a, everybody's doing a job. It's not like the money's being thrown to the wind. Somebody, somebody is doing a job that it's getting a salary.
Right.
Right?
Like, it doesn't work economic wise. Like, if you pay somebody to dig a hole and fill it back in.
But it does, because that money that somebody's getting a salary is going right back into the economy when they can, you know, have a afford to live. And that's why we can't get rid of our military, because, you know, it's it's, it's a huge part of our economy.
But it doesn't, it's, it's fake, it doesn't actually improve our economy. It's like a, it's like a, it's like a temporary mandate.
The benefit for us in this case is that the trail wouldn't go in at all if we didn't have the money, you know what I mean? Like, it's gonna be slower and stuff, but like. You know, we don't have the capacity to go out there and clear it all and do all the permitting and, cause the permitting still exists even at the local level, right? And so. I don't know, it's just, it it's, yeah, that whole world of grant funding is super frustrating, no doubt. Um, it's my world, so I'm kind of. I have an expectation of it. Yes, that's what I'm looking for.
I, you know, have had an experience with it, I, you know, not on the front lines, but on the sidelines and I've accepted it.
I just want to get the project done. That's, that's where I.
Last year, we um, last Earth, Earth Day, that's what we cleaned up, that whole trail. Yeah, yeah.
Clean up the world day. That was in September.
Oh, clean up the world day? Okay.
I think maybe you just started or you were just starting and, no, you know, you started in like October or November.
That's right.
Yeah, we went out there and we cleaned up, cause well, it's a, it's a whole, I mean, that's, there's a lot of homeless people living in that area. That's a whole nother dimension of the whole project, but um. Um.
Okay, so now Urban Forest Management Plan.
So this is another uh grant project, this is a planning grant, um no match, which is really, really nice. For us to not have to like worry about tracking and allocating and all that. Um. We're looking to ask for the full two hundred thousand dollars and this would be for a street tree inventory. Um, of not the entire municipality, but just the kind of urban core sort of area, really. Uh, if you think, uh. What am I thinking? Like, Goshen Road where that starts with uh Norfolk Road, you know, that area, kind of drew a line around. The west side and then up through um East Main Street, kind of like that southern part of the city and then the northern part is like the rural part. So this would be a street tree inventory for that, a um. A a a forest management plan for Public Works to be able to like. You know, now they'll know where all their trees are and the condition of those trees, you know, whether they're healthy, what they need to be replaced. The plan will tell them how they should prioritize and what they should do as far as maintaining that. And then. The last bit is a, is a canopy assessment, which looks at. All of the canopy in the city and talks about where should priority should be for like urban heat island mitigation, right? So places that don't have street trees. Now we know there's gaps there from the inventory and we know that there's no canopy from aerial, you know. And so maybe this should be a a mechanism to prioritize reforestation projects in the more urban areas.
The grant would allow the city to hire someone to do all of what you just said.
Yep, so I got two quotes that were varied kind of widely, but it was generally, I think, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For all of that work. Um, and it's, it's, I was surprised as well, cause it's a lot of. They have to have arborists and they're going to every single tree and doing an assessment of the health and condition.
Is the street?
Right. Yes, exactly. The park, parks and park trees, um but mostly the right of way. So there's like.
What's the property where the trees are?
The city. Cause it's right, you have like the city of the road and then you have about, you know, that's like ten feet on either side, that varies throughout the city, but. You know, the trees that are in that kind of immediate area adjacent to there. So they'll not only be looking at what's there, but where there's opportunity for planting. Um, the city just passed a tree ordinance that talks about, that sets an internal. I think it's a policy that every time that they remove a tree, for some kind of reason, they have to plant two in its place.
That's pretty interesting.
But they have no idea where to plant them. They're always like, Nate, where do we put, why am I supposed to know? I'm not in Public Works at all.
On the side of the road because then people who are off the road are gonna hit the trees. I mean, you want to have a clear zone, um so.
Well, could you just, can you do a um, if you have that policy, so this is for right of way, it can be on residential property or commercial property, correct or not?
I don't know the specifics of it. I don't know if it has to be within the right of way or like a city owned property, maybe like a park or something.
Yeah, I'm wondering, I'm just wondering if there are people who like, or if there are. Business fronts or areas where they want a tree, if they can just put it, put in that, that's a, that it's a possibility. I don't know their backyards, any of their front yards.
No, I know what you're saying. Yeah, I mean, there's a whole, I mean. No, I know what you're saying. Yeah, I mean, there's a whole, I mean, there are tree planting programs where like. That becomes available and that's maybe that's a mechanism to get those trees for it, but that's almost like a whole separate set of infrastructure where you're like. Come to us if you want a tree and like there's, there's grant funding to set up those type of projects as well. Um, some of it is covered by, we were talking about that landscaping regulation, right? Like. That's already being somewhat regulated on commercial properties.
No, I was just thinking like if uh, they're trying to figure out where to put a tree and then there's an inventory of. Um, like even, I, I don't know, even if there's like a website where people can say this location. Here, we would accept a tree.
Yeah.
That it could at least be assessed and even crossed off as not, you know, as not. Great for, for whatever or or, yeah, it's wonderful.
So I'm gonna bring the Conservation Commission into this process, right? Because it's a, it's a planning grant, right? So it's like. You know, we're gonna have a technical advisory sort of commission in that committee and that's just kind of like city staff. And then we're gonna have stakeholder groups that will involve the Conservation Commission as well. So. I'll, I'm gonna bring all interim products to you guys. I'll circulate them. You guys can comment independently. We could talk about it here. Um, because I think those kind of ideas, right? Like. What do we want to do here? What's the concerns? Like having that all, that all has to get rolled into the management plan.
Yeah, it has to get flushed out.
I wanna make sure there's a significant robust enough budget. So this is coming from um. Uh, money aimed at disadvantaged communities, disadvantaged census blocks. So for us to get this to cover a larger portion of the city. We have to demonstrate that it's gonna be benefiting those areas in Torrington that are, you know, considered disadvantaged by the federal government. This is a pass through grant, so it's federal money with its own strings. Um, so. So I wanna have a chunk of money in there, which I think we have enough extra money in there to do like Spanish language outreach, like, you know, doing multiple events. Meeting people where they are, providing childcare, like those type of really good sort of robust engagement practices. In, in the downtown area, in addition to other kinds of outreach as well. So, um, because I think that those are the places too where like. There's a lot of research, like people don't want trees, like they're, you know, in bi- in bigger cities where there's a lot of gun violence, they're like. We don't, we want open, we want open so we can see so people can hide behind a tree or, you know, um, those are all problems and or like you're from a. Um, you know, a, a cultural group that doesn't have trees and you don't like trees. There's a whole like set of like people who don't want trees. They have to, they have to rake the leaves now, you know, there's all kinds of dimensions. And so all that has to get kind of like. Rolled into a plan, um, so that they're not just like, city isn't just like coming in there, oh, we have a plan and just like, you know. Bulldozing everyone and putting trees where people don't want trees.
I find the ordinance really interesting in light of the last. I mean, I haven't been to a CACI since before um. Uh, COVID, so I'm thinking it was either two twenty nineteen or twenty eighteen, that was the last CACI week I went to, but. One of the presentations was the canopy. In Connecticut and that they're really expecting it to all go away. And I, which I, which was uh. Uh, crazy to me. But, you know, I just didn't expect that when trees had to come down, that they would go back up, that anyone go back up. And that was.
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm wondering whether there was, there's some kind of initiative that's gonna. Happening within that time to.
Well, I went to a conference. Yeah, I went to a conference with the Urban Forestry Council in Connecticut and that's where part of, you know, they were there obviously talking about this grant opportunity. But, you know, all this stuff kind of comes up at those, at those type of places. It was mostly like arborists, like urban tree people. Um, and like municipal staff and um, and nonprofits and stuff like that. So, um, anyway, I like planning and I like trees. I'm, I'm. I'm pretty jazzed on this, but uh, but I'm, I really wanna involve the commission. I think that's the kind of. You know, conversation like this, that's, that's good for those.
Okay, and then the last thing is our open space inventory, which is getting to be that time of year that we should start scheduling.
Yeah. Uh, do you wanna do May?
Yeah.
You mean walk the open space or?
Yeah, so we have a project. Have you done it before with us?
No, I'd like to though.
That's right. Okay, so the, so we, one of our jobs, one of the things that's in the regulations that we have to do is to inventory our open space. We have been working on this project for many, many years, like maybe close to a decade. Um, some of it was surveying all of our um. The deeds. Serving all of the deeds for um, properties that we owned and what their uses were. And um, uh, I did that with another Conservation Commission member. Um, I think that was like close to a decade ago. And then after that, we had to start inventorying and cataloging our open space and. Um, so it was sort of stalled for a number of years because there's a lot of administrative work involved in it. And also trying to get people together. We can't really go out alone. So, you know, there has to be like two people. We have to kind of know what we're doing. And we've been doing really well. This um, the last year, maybe a little more. How long have you been?
Few years.
Few years, yeah, last two years we've been doing great. Thank you, Nate.
I'm into this stuff, so.
So what, what I have found works the best is that we schedule um, our walk. And um, at a, at the meeting for the following month. And we do it from spring through fall till the weather gets crummy and then we don't do it through the winter, take a break. And all we need are, you know, we just need to have two people that are able to do it. So it's not like everybody needs to do every one.
You say inventory. I mean, you already have a list of all the properties. You just have to walk it.
We're doing sidewalks, doing sidewalks and then there's a form that we fill out where we're assessing. Whether it's high value, whether there are encroachments, whether um.
Good, see anything cool.
Yeah, see anything really neat, see anything really awful, see stuff that's confusing, what the heck is going on here?
A lot of these properties have not had a single person set foot since the subdivision, which could be the seventies, eighties, you know, no one's been out there. So it's kind of. Interesting what you find.
What's the largest property?
We have uh, the Town Farm one, I think is the largest one. That's across from Five Points. I think that's like two hundred acres or something like that.
I don't have kids. When you walk two hundred acres, what is the pattern when you walk?
So.
You have your GPS.
That one is a extreme outlier. Most of them are like three acres. So it becomes a lot easier. Yeah, that, that one was really.
You're looking on both ends. You kind of look, try to find the perimeter, use GPS, find the perimeter.
Yeah.
Then see if you can access it. Sometimes it's brambles you can't access. Sometimes you're in a stream. It's hard to access. You're on a steep slope. Like there's just all kinds of stuff and then you, you wanna see if you can get to perimeters and see if there's encroachment.
Yeah.
Oh, two hundred acres, that's a nice piece of property there.
Big one, it's beautiful. I think it's got like rare habitats, really, it's really a stellar thing. Um, it's the one, if you're going up.
Oh, Norfolk Road, okay.
And Stillwater's on the right, on the left, some of that state, but that goes all the way up the hill to. Yeah, so that's all, uh, you know, yeah, you know where the, where the Stillwater, uh, where the parking lot is for the boat launch? On the other side of the road, there's some state there, but right there, you'll notice it's wooded and it goes like this. Yeah, so Torrington Trails, hopefully one day we'll do a trail. It'd be a. Pretty steep trail, but going all the way up and then they could connect it to the John Brown Loop and all the stuff that's going on up at Five Points. I think it's around that size. It's at least, it's between a hundred and two hundred acres. It's the biggest thing that we have for sure. And then the next biggest is like thirty and then it goes down quickly. No. No, it's not that either, but then it goes down to like, you know, to a million little fragments.
Okay, so last year, Steve was available Wednesdays. I'm no longer. Well, in May, I will be. My, the kids won't be doing, um, won't be driving them for. Their classes probably after the, after the week of the fifth. So. I think I'm probably open almost any morning. From the thirteenth on in May. What works for you at this point, Nate?
Uh, I can be, during the week, I can be very flexible, especially this far out. Wednesday, the fifteenth, I'm not working. But.
Okay, so I've got something going on. Oh, you're not working. I've got something going on from the fifteenth to the twentieth. I'm out of state. But it looks like anything other than that, I'm okay. Let me just double check. So I already said I was. Yeah, looks like.
Yeah. Did you ever do like, uh, what time do you get out of work?
Um, like four, four thirty.
Cause I have, um. I have, I work till six thirty on Thursdays. I don't know if we're running the light issues that early in the year though.
So.
Probably not, actually.
Yeah, we must, usually you're pretty good for until six forty five at this, at that, like right now.
That's still another two months, two months away. So Thursdays, Thursdays I can do like that, like. I don't know if that works for everyone else, but I know you.
What's the date?
So the twenty third of the thirtieth at. Five PM.
This is only.
In May.
Oh, this is May? Okay.
Say again?
This is only for May this day?
This is the only date for May.
Twenty ninth to the thirtieth.
We do one every month.
I prefer the twenty third if there's no other.
I have, the day twenty third, I don't have a problem either right now.
So we're gonna say.
Awesome.
So that's a Thursday, Thursday, the twenty third.
Five.
And do you have something in mind for us to do? Oh, yeah?
Yeah, a good one.
Okay, good.
So.
All right. So we're gonna, what do I call?
This is a great piece of property.
Space sidewalk.
So this is going from Stillwater southward. Um, al- along the Noggetuck River. There's like a fifty foot swath adjacent to the Noggetuck River that goes all the way down. That could be a future trail connection site.
So where are we meeting?
We would meet at Stillwater Pond at the dam.
At what time?
Uh, five o'clock. Do you know where the dam, like uh, if you turn off of Still, Stillwater Pond Road, is that what that's called? Stillwater Road?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's that, Stillwater Dam, yeah.
Something like that. It's, it's.
Is it where the water comes over?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there's some, there's some parking areas.
From where we walked that little.
Across the stream. Right, on the other side of the river from where we walked.
Five PM?
What, what, we're meeting again before?
Yes, we are, so, but I'll put it on the calendar for May, which is. Stillwater Pond.
It's not on two seventy two. You take a, or like a right off two seventy two.
I think that that road is Stillwater Pond Road.
It is Stillwater Pond Road, yes. It's not, it used to be Bradsville Down Road.
Yeah, there's the big dam there. You can't miss the dam.
I did too. I either did my kids. Yeah, that was Skoken's property. The son still owns it, but the father and the mother, they passed away. But I don't know why it, why it dried up.
It's dried up? Somebody must have drained it. That was the coolest place. I haven't been there in years. That was another one of my favorite institutions to defeat that snap into.
I know, that was great. I used to take my kids there all the time. So Stillwater Pond Dam.
Cool, it's nice that everyone can. Cool, okay. And that's all I have.
Okay, so we need a motion to adjourn. In a second. All right, all in favor? Motion carries.
Okay.
Can I take this?
Yes, yes you can. Um, yeah.
That's still at the Goshen Fairgrounds?
That was last year.